About that time, gonna, are we doing it? Get this show on the road.
Hey, move your mic. Jen, move your mic closer, please.
Me?
Sorry, Mayor Protem, will you move your?
MPT. MPT.
Okay, MPT.
I'd like to call the meeting to order.
You did great. Excuse me. Just whenever. Just whenever. We're just gonna start, just at your leisure. All right. Welcome to the Wednesday, September 24th, City Council Meeting. Just consider the agenda today. Does anybody have any modifications to the agenda?
Mayor Protem Hensley, I'd like to make one addition to the agenda, and this will be under presentations, if you may, if the council so approves, to make this item A, and then reorder the rest, and add a resolution honoring We Are Hope Week in the City of Hendersonville.
Okay. Any other additions or changes? Everybody cool with that? We have a motion?
Madam Mayor Protem, I move that City Council approve the agenda as amended.
Yep, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then consent agenda? Any issues there?
Mayor Protem, I move that City Council approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I think our esteemed city manager is going to read the proclamation for We Are Hope Week.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Hensley. I think at this point, we'll ask our students maybe to come and stand right in front of the podium. I think this is important for y'all, and then we'll take a picture here after we read the resolution. So we'll ask, I'll read the resolution, and then ask City Council to come right here. Then, Mayor Protem, if you will, actually, after we adopt it, then we'll have the mayor, Protem, go out so we can take a picture with the council, or maybe all the council will go out there. So, resolution honoring the observance of We Are Hope Week in Henderson County Public Schools, middle and high schools, September 22nd, 2025 through September 26th, 2025. Whereas substance and alcohol misuse adversely affects the brain, liver, heart, and overall health, and can cause adverse behavioral, psychological, social, and fatal consequences. Sorry, my phone just malfunctioned. Consequences. And whereas there were more than eighty-three thousand three hundred drug overdose deaths in the United States in 2024, and the overall trend, and the overall trend since 2018 is marked by a sharp rise driven largely by synthetic opioids like fentanyl. Whereas substance and alcohol abuse continues to occur among children and youth in our society, with overall usage among youth declining during the last ten years due to education and prevention efforts. And whereas student leaders in Henderson County Public Schools, six high schools and four middle schools have joined with local Henderson County Hope Coalition in educating the peers on alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and prescription drug use and misuse. And whereas students at Apple Valley Middle, Flat Rock Middle, Hendersonville Middle, Rugby Middle, East Henderson High, Innovative High School, Henderson County Career Academy, Hendersonville High, North Henderson High, and West Henderson High are pledging to be and maintain substance-free. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Hendersonville that September 22nd, 2025 through September 26th, 2025 be observed in the Henderson County Public Schools, middle and high schools as We Are Hope Substance Prevention Week. So Madam Mayor Protem, I do need a motion to approve the resolution, and a vote, please.
So moved.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
All right, maybe the council could go around and stand with our students and get a picture.
Bring it in a little further if you can. Okay, so first, everybody look at me, and then we'll take all the photos. Okay, ready, everybody, one, two, three? And in the center, please. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, guys, stay in order, or know your order because he's gonna, he wants to. Here, why don't you come back here and we'll make sure, I'll show you the picture.
All right, we're gonna just jump right into it and discuss the Whitmire Recreation Center and Patton Park repair update.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor Protem and members of the City Council. Our design team has been working hard on concepts for the Whitmire Center and Tom's Park project. They're here today to present those to you, and so today will be an opportunity to provide feedback on those concepts, ask questions, and hopefully we can narrow down the decision a little bit. And next month's council meeting, I believe the workshop staff will be asking for final design recommendations based on these concepts. So with that, I'm gonna introduce Katie Feller with CPL.
Okay, Katie Richard. Just a quick introduction of who's here today. I am Katie Feller, I'm the project manager and an architect with CPL. This is Rachel Nielsen, she's the project principal, also an architect with CPL. Emily is with, a landscape architect with Withers Ravinal, and Bill is our aquatic designer with WTI. Can I have a second? This for online. Sorry. So just a quick kind of recap of how we got to this presentation today. We have been meeting with different stakeholders, the community members, and even had an online survey in order to gather information for the different options that we're gonna share with you today. So this is kind of a run-through of the different people that we've met with. In February, we had the City Council meeting. We've had multiple different shareholder meetings over the past few months. We had a community engagement presentation on May 19th, and then an online survey that we had through May 12th through May 23rd. And then a second community engagement on July 15th. So those have all kind of compiled into the information that we used to prepare these options today. So basically, I'm gonna be breaking down the information that we gathered from the community engagement, the meetings, and the online survey into park spaces, aquatic spaces, and community spaces. So basically, from our research gathered, topics that we kind of heard multiple times are listed on the left-hand side, and then we use these topics to come up with programmatic elements which are showcased in the images on the right-hand side. And then the size of these bubbles on the right-hand side are directly correlated to the amount of times that we heard these topics coming up. So this is information gathered, like I said, from stakeholders, community, and the online survey. So we heard nature and restoration come up a lot, exercise opportunities for the park, multi-use spaces within the park, and education and culture spaces. So some examples of these programmatic elements that could represent those items would be constructed wetlands, multi-use fields, educational trails, and playgrounds. And this is kind of a breakdown, a slightly more detailed look into how, what we heard from each of these groups. There's a decent amount of overlap between the stakeholders, community engagement, and online survey. We heard a lot of walking trails, playgrounds, people are interested in the skate park, different outdoor activities like basketball and shuffleboard, and definitely, like I said, interest in restoration and nature as well. So this is kind of a dive into some of the aquatic spaces that we heard feedback on, exercise spaces within the aquatics, intergenerational opportunities, accessible areas, and shaded areas were elements that came up. So these could be represented with programmatic elements like an open swim area in a pool. Having kind of a lazy river channel could be an intergenerational opportunity where families could gather and people of all ages could use it. Having that competition area in a pool with lap lane swim and possibly even diving boards. And then splash pad or zero entry zones for accessibility, and more of those intergenerational elements as well.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I think I remember from our draft presentation that the size of the bubbles, I guess, are indicative of something, is that right?
Yes, so the size of the bubbles is kind of correlated and related to the amount of times that those topics came up. So we basically gathered data, we put it into an Excel sheet, and we were able to then generate, okay, this topic came up this number of times, this one came up this number of times. So open swim was a really big one with the aquatics, and then the competition came up a lot as well. And again, these are, these are the major elements overall, so all these came up quite a bit, but out of these, open swim came up the most.
So as we go forward, the bigger the bubble, the more importance it was in our surveys and our stakeholder meetings, and.
Right.
So I know the council knows that, but some of the folks that may be watching online, I wanted them to also.
Yeah, thank you. So again, just kind of a deeper dive into the aquatic feedback from the stakeholders, community engagement meetings, and then the online survey. We heard a lot about competition, having lap lanes, a lazy river, a current channel, the zero depth entry and splash pad were elements that came up. And then we also had some discussions with the fifty-meter pool versus twenty-five-yard pool, and kind of the differences with providing one or the other, what that would provide to the community, and then what kind of programs you could house with the different sizes. Community spaces, so elements that came up a lot with, with all of our research gathered were meeting spaces, intergenerational activities again, like the aquatics, and then flexible zones. So the bubbles are kind of showcasing some of the programs that we thought, or that can, that can house these different elements. So some of these would be indoor recreation, an event space, classroom areas, activity spaces, indoor play, exercise areas, and then party areas. And then slightly deeper dive into kind of the detailed feedback that we heard from each of these areas. So again, we heard a lot about intergenerational, having people of all ages be able to use the community space was really important. Accessibility into these areas, being able to have flex zones that could host kind of different sized events came up a decent amount of times. Indoor activities, sports, and then multi-use spaces kind of relates back to that flex zone too. So a space that could provide a lot of different uses for different people in the community.
So let me, sorry to keep interrupting, but just, we've had a lot of discussion in our community about these projects, so.
Yes.
Just wanna make sure we're clear, you know, we heard a lot of information from the local bridge group. Wanna make sure that was captured. Where would that be captured in that community feedback? It doesn't say bridge, but.
So in the multipurpose and flexible rooms, and I'll show you in the plan a little bit further down the presentation, but we plan for these spaces that can kind of flex between these different areas, and then also plan for the size of the spaces to be able to house events like bridge.
Okay, 'cause at our last stakeholder, our folks from the bridge didn't feel like they had been heard, so I wanna make sure we pointed out in these slides that they were heard, and that's how it went into the programming.
Yes, absolutely, we definitely heard, and we even, again, it'll show on a later slide, but the area of the space that we designed is almost exactly, it's actually a little larger than the current bridge area, so that kind of, that's, we use that as kind of a starting point in order to generate these spaces. Okay, so this is kind of just an overall, kind of narrowing down or compiling the information that we gathered into these three buckets of information. So the park information, the aquatic information, and the community information that we have gathered from all of our different meetings and presentations. So elements that came up multiple times that we move forward with into the design for the park area were the trails, playground, sustainability and restoration, biking areas, the skate park, pump track, and flexible lawn space. With the aquatic area, lap lanes, competition, having the zero depth entry or splash pad area for accessibility and for play, a lazy river, current channel, a water slide, and water aerobics. And then within the community space, intergenerational accessibility, flex and multi-use spaces, which would relate back to that larger space, and then event spaces as well. So wanted to just take a second to kind of look back at what was current, or is currently at the Whitmire Community Center and Tom's Park location. So this space is about 2.5 acres, it has fifty parking spots, fourteen shuffleboard courts. The large flex space where bridges currently house is about thirty-two hundred square feet. The overall footprint is about eighty-two hundred square feet, and then there are park trails on the site as well. We compiled research and data with a cost estimate to figure out how much it would cost to repair the current facility as it is now. That construction cost estimate is about four point three million dollars. And then we also came up with a construction cost estimate to replace the building with the same functions, but brought up to code, and then also shifted slightly on-site so that it's further from the flood zone, and that's about four point six million dollars. Patton Park existing conditions, this site is eighteen acres, it has a hundred and forty-five parking spots, about forty-seven thousand square foot of pool facilities, and about seven thousand square feet of that is for the support buildings for the aquatic area. It has a fifty-meter, eight-lane outdoor pool with diving board, an outdoor kiddie pool, playground, tennis court for pickleball courts, a baseball field, a skate park, basketball court, and open field area. So we also generated construction cost estimates for this site, so the estimated construction part, construction cost in order to repair this site is about eight point nine million, and the estimated construction cost in order to replace with the same kind of general facilities and program would be about eighteen million dollars.
I have a question.
Sure.
So when you're saying cost to repair, that is not in any way improving the standards for flood mitigation in the future, correct?
So that would be, it would be basically repairing the building as it is, and that does, that does not include raising it for the flood plain. But the cost to replace, we did have it raised up to mitigate for future flooding.
And so if we did not make those repairs, or like raising, then we would not be able to recoup any federal funding in an event of another like adverse weather?
Emily may be able to speak to this slightly better than I, but the general, the general idea is that, or our understanding of this funding is that you would want to be able to prevent future flooding, so in the case of just the repair, it's likely that we wouldn't be able to promise preventing future flooding, so that may then affect the funding.
Our understanding is that as a condition of receiving the money from FEMA is if you don't mitigate it, and they're not gonna pay for it a second time. And I'm looking, everybody shake their heads, is that right? They would not pay for it, we would get it repaired, but then if it happened to us again, they would not build it back again if we didn't mitigate it.
Any other questions?
I just wanna make sure that we're clear, that that would also include doing minimal repairs to Whitmire Center would also affect our opportunity to recoup funding.
That is.
So like, not the full repairs, but just doing minimal repairs would put us in danger of.
That is our understanding.
Okay. Yes.
That's our understanding. We haven't seen those documents yet, so I will tell you that is our understanding and going all the way through the process, but that is what we've been told by our consultant, and that's our understanding.
Okay. Does FEMA have like a different contact information? Can we like Instagram them, or try to make contact in another way? Because they're not very responsive, getting, I mean, we're almost at a year, like a year, and we have no real commitment from FEMA on what they're gonna pay, how much they're gonna pay, it's gonna be more months, is there, I mean.
My understa, I don't think they do. My understanding is I've been watching, we've been working with our consultant in Henderson County on a different front, has had similar issues, and I don't, even with a number of meetings, they don't have, they've not been getting clear answers yet either. So the easiest way is for me to be honest, like I always am to you, is I don't know that we could get that information readily immediately.
That's why we're here. Okay. So jumping into our design options, we have four different options, two on the Whitmire and Tom's Park location, and then two on the Patton Park location. We are calling them 1A and 1B for the Whitmire-Tom's Park area, and then 2A, 2B for Patton Park. So the 1A option at Whitmire and Tom's Park has a community building and trail restrooms, and then other park amenities. The actual structures on the site are about twelve thousand six hundred square feet, and the estimate for this design option is about seven million dollars in construction costs. Option 1B is Whitmire Park Support, so that would be developing some, a few more of the park program elements, and then having trail restrooms as well on this site. It's about a thousand fifty square feet just for that trail restroom building, and it's estimated to be about three point one million for construction costs. 2A is the fifty-meter pool at Patton Park. It has outdoor aquatics with fifty-meter indoor aquatics and a warm water wellness pool, aquatic support along with those indoor aquatic areas, and then trail restroom building. It's about sixty thousand two hundred and fifty square feet, and the construction cost estimate is about forty-nine point two million. And option 2B is the twenty-five-yard pool at Patton Park. It also has outdoor aquatics with an outdoor restroom building, a twenty-five-yard indoor aquatic pool, and a warm water wellness pool, and then a trail restroom building separate from that as well. And this option also has aquatic support space that's built into the building as well. That's about forty thousand sixty square feet, and estimated to be about thirty-seven point seven million dollars in construction costs.
So this is the conceptual layout for the Whitmire Community Center and Tom's Park 1A concept. This actually shows the community center being demolished and rebuilt on the highest point on this, of the site to reduce the amount of fill that we would need to get it to be above the base flood elevation enough that we could feel comfortable with the reduced risk of flooding in the future. To do that, it would displace the shuffleboard courts, and so we found, have to find another location for them, and trying to fit them on the opposite side of the park. We would also need to flatten and fill that area. This adds a playground adjacent to a picnic shelter, which when Katie gets into the internal workings of the building is also close to the party room, so that you've got this nice communal multigenerational space to hold events, where you could have families there with their kids. And then about the same amount of parking on the site that was there previously. And then flexible lawn area over by the shuffleboards as well. This plan to replace the same programming that's out there and add to, based on community input, creates increased flood risk, because we'd have to fill under the building, we have to fill under the shuffleboard courts, which reduces the amount of water that site can hold in a flood condition, which means it has to be displaced elsewhere. We'd also be increasing the impervious area, which we would manage with bioretention areas to clean the runoff. But again, with the increased flood risk, it would require revising the flood risk mapping, which is also a very expensive and time-consuming process.
And would that, that would be the case regardless of, that's for shuffleboard, oh, thank you, sorry.
That would be the case for the building, we'd need to fill under the building and shuffleboard courts, both, so to rebuild the building in any capacity. If the shuffle, if the shuffleboard courts were not on that side, then we could lower the other side of the stream to offset the fill under the building, which would then create a no-rise situation, which would not require the flood mapping to be revised. And we could provide additional bioretention or SLU, which could actually provide additional flood storage in a flooding event and potentially reduce the risk. In that wetland area where the shuffleboard courts are now, or are they proposed to be? Yeah, where the shuffleboard. Okay. Supposed to be, because usually you, if you're filling, you want to cut across that same stream cross-section. Okay. To reduce that, so we would want to do that where the shuffleboards are shown right now. Okay, thanks.
And if I may, I'm gonna ask Brian to just, there's a little nuance into what I was saying about the funding, and I wanna be absolutely clear, it's not so much about funding for damage in the future, it's about passing up an opportunity to have funding that may actually make the facility better, is really, is that, am I right about that?
It's a little bit of both, and so we'll have the Halleen up, I just also wanna note, like, we will have a Halleen update as our third agenda item as well, so I'll go in more detail about the FEMA process and all of that, so we'll have that information tonight as well. But it's both, so related to insurance and. So related to insurance and federal funding, if we put something back in the floodplain and don't mitigate it, does create risk for being able to get reimbursed in the future. And then, you know, we, we could go back and just, you know, repair minimally and try to get it back up and running today. However, that will jeopardize our capacity to get FEMA funding, especially to do anything to try to mitigate it or make it a better project. And so out of the gate, the direction was let's build back better. Let's take our time and do this right for the community, capitalize on the federal funding that's available to the community. And so that is the direction we went forward with as, as staff. And it is a long process, and it's going to continue to be a long process.
So I just, there's lots of questions in the community about why we have, why we're doing this process. I just want to remind everybody a little bit of the detail. And understand, there is lots of nuance to this, and it is not very scientific. It's a lot of art, so I apologize, Mayor Protem.
And then also, there is a decreased ability for us to be able to insure a property that we make minimal repairs on in a floodplain. So it's not just about like federal FEMA funding, like in another event. We actually couldn't insure it, is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
So that's also a really big factor for me, like to spend four million or seven million dollars on something that we can't actually insure?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So this is the community building for this one A option on the Whitmire site. As I mentioned earlier, this, the large kind of right orange square is a large flex recreation zone. It's about thirty-four hundred square feet. The current Bridge Club, or the current area where Bridge Club plays is thirty-two hundred square feet, so we're just over that area. And then also within this building, we've housed multipurpose rooms, a warming kitchen in between two party rooms that then open to the exterior. So that would, that could function for kind of concession, concessions to the park, excuse me. We have a couple of bathrooms within the building, and then we also have exterior house bathrooms. So those could actually operate on separate hours from the buildings that people using the park trails could still access them maybe when the, the community building itself isn't in operation. We have a couple classrooms, those could function as some of those rec, or excuse me, some of those flex activity spaces that I mentioned earlier, maybe some intergenerational opportunities, different hosted events. And then we have just general building support and, and an admin suite and a large entryway and lobby. And the overall building square footage is twelve thousand six hundred square feet.
This image, which looks very similar to the, the one that you have, but it does say one A Patent Park and Pool? Is this a different?
Nope, that's the same project.
Okay. That could be anywhere, right?
The building.
This building? Because you're referencing it to Whitmire, is that right?
Yes.
But it could be in another location?
So originally, we had community spaces laid out on the Patent Park options, and then we kind of moved towards more aquatic spaces on those options. But to your point, yes, we could design community spaces within those buildings.
This is the one B concept for Whitmire and Tom's Park. This concept removes the community center from the site and instead focuses on more of kind of like a pocket mark amenity approach with the proximity to downtown to create more of a community hub space. This one provides a larger playground area with an adjacent restroom facility. The shuffleboard courts that are shown, that's envisioned as being a multipurpose area that's covered. So the shuffleboards, it would be a flat surface, and there would be stripe for shuffleboard instead of the way the courts are now currently out there so that it could be used as a stage or community gathering space adjacent to an open lawn. And then across from the stream, we would, we're proposing to do a lot more bio-retention with a constructed wetlands, slough for flood storage, and more of a passive picnic space nestled among the enhanced nature on that side. Where's this one? I think that, yeah. This one actually reduces the overall impervious out there, so reduces stormwater runoff from what is currently out on that site and enhances the water quality through the bio-retention areas and could potentially provide more flood storage through this design than what is currently out there, therefore would reduce, could reduce flood risk to adjacent properties as well in this approach.
In this option, though, the shuffleboard courts would not be what they need to do competitions?
Correct.
Okay.
From what, from what I'm, I've heard and understood, how they use them for competitions.
We're all quickly becoming experts on shuffleboard competitions.
Any more questions before we move on from this one? So this is just a recap of the comparison of the two options. One A is retains the community center, rebuilds it at the higher point of the site, creates additional programming with the playground and exterior accessible restrooms, picnic shelter, rebuilds the shuffleboard courts on the other side of the stream with a flexible lawn adjacent to that. Through that increases the runoff, increases the flood risk. But like we talked about, if the shuffleboard courts were not on that side, we could mitigate that flood risk and reduce it, so that wouldn't be an issue. One B removes the community center altogether and creates more of just the exterior park, park elements with community hub spaces and multi-generational opportunities and enhanced environmental practices and sustainability options and reduce runoff and flood risk. Moving on to the Patent Park options. This is option two A. This is the fifty-meter indoor aquatic and with outdoor aquatics. This, due to the increased aquatics programming, we had to increase the amount of parking provided to help sustain and support the operations of that and, and the existing operations of the other program elements on the site. So this actually displaced the existing skate park, which we are showing being rebuilt on the other side of the stream adjacent to where the Greenway access is, and envisioning that as a combined skate park and pump track similar to one that's actually in Georgia. So it could be used as either. This retains the existing basketball courts where they are as an external accessible restroom facility near the basketball courts and near the playground with a covered picnic shelter there as well. And, and then since we are displacing the existing tennis courts, we're showing the addition of four pickleball courts on that lower right-hand corner. It could also be a tennis court. But since there's tennis courts being built at Berkeley Mill, not very far from this, we figured pickleball would, would be a good option. Then this also has a flexible lawn space for events on the opposite side of the stream. And we're utilizing the, the majority of the park side on the opposite side of the stream for flood mitigation because in this scenario, we're going to have to raise the aquatics footprint significantly to get it above the base flood elevation and to a point where it would have the reduced flooding risk. And to offset that fill, we would need to provide a cut on the opposite side so that the flood elevation and flood risk, the water elevation would stay the same through the park. We could also provide additional flood storage opportunity to reduce risk to adjacent properties and to the park through what we're showing right now as a slough, which is basically like a form of wetland. It would be a depressed area over there that would actually have a shallow channel through it. So once the stream reached a certain level, water would start to flow into the slough. And so it reduces the amount of time that it would take for that stream to flood from where it would be without it. And just kind of creates like an overflow for it before it would flood to the normal stage. And I forgot to mention in Whitmire, but in all these concepts, we're also considering the fact that we would do stream restore, stream bank restoration in all the parks as part of each of these, each of these options. I think that covers that one.
Could you go into a little bit more depth as far as the outdoor aquatic space and what it entails with this option?
I'll let Bill do that.
Okay, sorry.
Your question is timely, so just about there. So we'll dive into the building here a little bit, and then we will talk more specifically about aquatics. But just looking at the two A aquatic layout of the facility itself and some of the support spaces, you'll see there we've got dedicated areas for aquatics, staff, public, restrooms. You know, the large gray boxes in the middle of the, of the facility are your fifty-meter pool on the left, and then your warm water program pool on the right. The, kind of the blue areas are your aquatic support spaces, so your pools themselves, your wellness pools, that's your outdoor area would be outside. Then those also would be your spectator areas, pool deck areas for, for your different events and different, you know, program uses. Meat management areas are dedicated for that. You've got pool storage and then lifeguard spaces all kind of under that umbrella. We've got dedicated staff areas in terms of administration suites, concessions both upper and lower, lobby areas, vestibules, party rooms. There's, in the pink area, you'll see a couple smaller rooms all the way over to the right, kind of top right. Those are party rooms to be used both for indoor usage and also serve the outdoor pool. And, and right above that is a concession area that will do the same. It can serve both indoor and outdoor. And then several different locker room spaces. We've got dedicated locker rooms kind of for the fifty-meter area. And then understanding that we might have a different need over with the warm water program pool outside of large events. We've got a dedicated locker room over there for that area, and that will also then serve the outdoors. So this facility is being designed and layout to serve both the indoor aquatic area and also the outdoor aquatic areas. What you're not seeing here are just some, some layering things. You're seeing the first floor. There is a mezzanine area that would have spectator seating and facilities, restrooms, things like that up top for, for spectators. That's, that's along the fifty-meter pool above those adjacent support spaces. I think there's also a small concession area up there for, for events and when that would happen.
So would there be space on that second level to have additional classrooms or other community space?
You could, depending on how we configured that. There is a, there is a classroom on the first floor right off the pool deck, off the fifty-meter pool deck and a meat management room. Those two areas are, have kind of a partition, a movable partition, so that space could be used for community usage. But yes, that area could be used up there. And you could have rollback bleachers, it depends, you know, and, and that could become a very flexible space depending on how the final configuration ends up.
Okay.
Taking a look here just at aquatics alone, kind of the purple rectangle is representing the indoor aquatics. And then you've got kind of a tan triangular area, that's your outdoor aquatics. Remember, both of these spaces, the support areas for these are all indoors and, and inside the facility. So the fifty-meter pool, right now it's being laid out with two bulkheads. Those bulkheads give you the ability to configure multiple different configurations, fifty-meter pools, two twenty-five yard pools, twenty-five meter pools, all different kinds of opportunity there. You also have the ability to do cross-course. So you've got like over twenty-ish lanes of cross-course twenty-five yard lanes there. So the value of that layout is, it's all the parallel programming that you'd be able to provide. You'll be able to have multiple teams in there at the same time practicing. You could have diving going on and swimming going on for high schools. And you could still then have room for community lap swim, all happening at the same time. The warm water program pool is, it does have lap lane, so it would, it would kind of provide that warm-up, warm-down opportunity if you're having a fifty-meter competition. But really, it's, it's relatively shallow. It's more for programming and lessons and water aerobics and to provide that, with the understanding that your, your lessons and sometimes water aerobics and different water, or different programming, they're not going to be comfortable in a competition pool that's seventy-eight to eighty-two degrees. They're going to want something that's more eighty-eight, you know, degrees. And so that's what the program pool is really catered to with the idea that those then are dedicated to year-round aquatics and serving the community. The outdoor pool has a lazy river right now that we're showing, kind of a small community area there inside the lazy river just for kind of a conversation code, we call it. There's some basketball goals there in a, in a, in the bottom right. Play structure, some play and spray features. And, and really what we've done here in the zero-depth entry area of this is kind of combined the idea of the pool and the spray pad into one item. And, and at least initially, the reason we've done that is because there's efficiency in operations for you all by doing that. If you have a separate splash pad from your pool, then you've got a whole different operating system, and you've got operational budget associated with that. By combining them, then you're reducing that to one operating system and, and your overall operational budget. So definitely opportunities to enhance that with, you know, as, depending on which one is selected and, and modify that and tweak that. But then we're also showing a lot of shade around. So some of the different shapes that you're seeing there and the, kind of that darker tan are different shade structures, understanding that's a, that's a key component for the community.
What's the maximum depth of the outdoor?
It's only about four feet. Yep. Did I answer your questions on aquatics? Good. Anything else on one A or, or two A, I'm sorry? Okay. I think Emily's going to talk a little about the park.
All right, so this is the Patent Park two B concept, which is the twenty-five yard pool and outdoor aquatics. This layout is a little bit similar to the other one. It's, didn't quite need as much parking support as the first option. So we're able to retain the existing skate park in this concept. And, but we displaced the basketball courts by expanding that area instead. So we're showing those being replaced on the other side of the stream. It's got your playground, picnic, and exterior restroom shelter right when you come into the park, right there to the left. And then to the right of the aquatics where we've got the existing tennis courts being retained. And that has a exterior restroom and pool support area that can be accessed on one side by the outdoor aquatics program, and on the other side would have exterior access from the tennis courts to restrooms. So you, this one actually has two exterior restrooms for the park uses. And then we've added a small parking lot that could be used for the tennis courts right off of Asheville Highway. This one, again, uses the majority of where the baseball field was as flood mitigation for the offset of fill of the aquatics footprint. And also provide, retain some of the existing lawn area on the other side of the stream where the soccer fields are right now. That, that could be used for events and multipurpose fields. In, in both options, we are increasing the impervious area from what's out there due to the, the additional parking need. However, we would be able to offset that runoff with the additional bio-retention. And then by retaining the land on the other side of the stream, we're able to be flexible with the flood mitigation and offset of the, of the fill of the aquatics footprint. I think that covers that one. Any questions about the park uses on this one?
Is two seventy-six the total number of spaces with all three lots, including the tennis lot?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So taking a closer look then at this facility, the indoor aquatic area and some of the adjacent support spaces. So taking a closer look then at this facility, the indoor aquatic area and some of the adjacent support spaces. Similarly, we've kind of divided this in, into the, you know, the base building, the aquatics area, staff, public and restroom areas. You've got a, your competition pool on the left in gray, your warm water programming pool, different size on the right in gray. In the darker blue, you've got your aquatic support spaces, which are going to be, again, kind of your wet classroom, meat management area, pool storage areas, lifeguard areas. Then you've got your, same here, you've got administrative suites, concession areas are located in this facility also. Party rooms in the lobby area and then party rooms up there in pink are available, so we took kind of the same approach, even though the facility is smaller, smaller, these, these items are still catering to the outdoors. And then you've got multi-use and single-use locker rooms available in this facility. The multi-use locker rooms catering more towards the competition pool and lap pool. And then the, you know, the single-use facilities and are, are catering more towards a warm water pool and/or to the outdoor facility. We also, th- this facility is a, a little tight for completely catering to the outdoor facility alone. And so I'm not sure if I know how to go back. On this site plan here, if you look at letter B, there's a small building over there and that is to help meet the needs of the outdoor pool. And that is this small building you're seeing down here on the right, so it's an, it's a, it's an additional lifeguard area and, and restroom area. And that would then not only be able to serve the outdoor pool, but it can then also potentially serve other areas of the park in that area, the tennis courts and whatnot. This total building square footage is about forty thousand square feet. And then this is the aquatic area. So again, kind of the purple square is your indoor area, the tan square is your outdoor area. Indoor area for this concept is really looking at a twenty-five yard, eight lane twenty-five yard pool with a, with a ADA accessible ramp, deep enough for one meter diving. All of those items would be, you know, what would be standard for high school competition and/or USA swimming competition in the wintertime. And then you've got a warm water program pool. Those lap lanes are not regulatory twenty-five yards, but they are, you know, adequate for lap swimmers. That is also a shallow pool. Max depth there is probably going to be about four and a half feet, maybe five in the, in the very deepest part, but again, warmer water catering to other programs that aren't necessarily going to be suitable for seventy-eight degree colder water that's better for competition. The outdoor program is very, very similar and you'll see the one big change here is the slide. You know, just knowing that we had a little bit bigger footprint, providing something different there to the two concepts. We're bringing in a slide tower, it's got runouts. You can have an attendant at the top that's dispatching kids down the slide. And because they're runouts, you don't necessarily need to have a lifeguard at the bottom, because they can stand up and walk away. The outdoor pools right now between the two concepts are being shown as the same. You know, once there's a, a concept selection down the road, there's opportunities to enhance that and, and modify that down the road. There was a request to speak to some opportunities regarding structures that can be opened to the outside. And so this is something that we see in our industry a lot, whether it be in competition facilities, which are highlighted here. We also see it in the water park industry that I delve in a lot. So whether it be structures unlimited that have, you know, steel pre-engineered buildings that have openings, you know, that can be either on the sides or the roof mechanically opened, that's very common. There's open air structures, which you're seeing kind of in the top right and bottom middle. These are additional, you know, just another manufacturer's pre-engineered building, very common in the industry, very common in water parks, very common in, in, in competition facilities that have the ability to open roofs, open sides, a lot of different, a lot of different things there to kind of bring the outside in. And you're also seeing a lot of different materials used here that allow natural light and/or, you know, natural light to come in via a cowl wall system or just straight light to come in via glass. So a lot of different opportunities there. The other option right in the middle, top middle is, is, is a dome option where there's a middle section where those domes can separate and open up and kind of overlap one another. That's actually a facility in Cary, North Carolina where they use that, another consideration. I will say all of these considerations, all these different pre-engineered items can be included in the concepts that we've developed to date. You know, so that ends up being something that we kind of work with you on the next step. And I would only end it with the fact that in each of these, there are limitations sometimes to HVAC mechanical systems and things that you can do. And anyone who's spent any amount of time in an indoor aquatic facility, air quality is number one. And so we want to make sure that we're choosing the right building that can facilitate the right system to make an inviting and, you know, environment for the community. Any questions on these?
Yes. Can you talk a little bit about what competitions the twenty-five yard pool is suited for?
Yeah. So the twenty-five yard pool would be suited for high school competitions. You could have USA swimming competitions there, anything associated with the Y would happen there. Typically, your fifty meter competitions are USA swimming regulated, regulated and/or YMCA and those happen in the summer. And so it wouldn't be able to host that. It wouldn't have that ability.
Okay, it would be sufficient for a high school swim team, though?
Absolutely. High school swim team, USA swimming and Y swimming could all be accommodated in there. There would just be limitations to, you know, some coaches, having been a coach, would argue that if I'm going to have my swimmers compete at fifty meters, I would like for them to be able to train fifty meters.
Okay.
Yeah, so just in, in that context.
And what would the spectator space be like?
Oh, I'm glad you brought that up. I don't think I mentioned that and that's my fault. So similar to the previous building, there is a mezzanine area up here, so there are stairs up to the top and there's a, there's a seating area up, up top with restrooms to facilitate those events in this location. So in each of the two different concepts for aquatics, we have spectators and parents off the pool deck and upstairs watching the, watching different competitions and/or lessons and then areas around the deck for the athletes and our coaches and meat management staff.
Thank you.
Last slide here, comparing these two Patton Park options. We went over the fifty meter versus twenty-five yard pool, so those are the two big differences between the two different options. In terms of larger facilities, you've got very similar outdoor pool options at each with the two B having that, that additional kind of slide billboard fun activity for, that you don't have currently. The two A has a pump track, a skate park, flex lawn, it's got an informal stage, playground, pickleball courts, bio retention areas, you know, a lot of similar, and then, and then a lot of the other things are very similar to the other. So the pump track and skate park are, are unique to two A, just kind of trying to highlight some of the differences. The informal stage is unique to two A. And then obviously the prices are then unique to those two options. You're looking at forty-nine million plus and almost thirty-eight million for the two B. Any questions to, you know, between the two?
I have a question, but I don't know if you can answer it right now. If we were to do one of the retractable roof options, like, what, can you give me like a price range? Like, I know we don't know how.
I think my experience in looking at that is, is I believe, and, and I'll be perfectly honest, I haven't dove into our building costs.
Yeah.
I put together the aquatic costs.
Yeah.
But they typically are comparable to your, your brick and mortar costs and which is I know what we've, what we've assumed to date, so.
Okay.
That's my experience.
So we wouldn't anticipate it, if we were to switch to something like that, we wouldn't anticipate it adding a whole lot to the cost or changing it?
I don't think so, but I don't want to speak for the architect.
I mean, at this, at this stage, we're pretty pie level on all of these.
Right, yeah.
So I think that as long as we know early on, because a system like that affects so many other like mechanical systems
Yeah.
and all that kind of thing, it affects foundations, all of that.
Yep.
That some systems like that didn't have reduced foundation sizes or things like that, so then some of this cost.
Yeah. It probably though would also affect our ability to have like the mezzanine level or no?
Not necessarily, yeah. They're, they're quite, they're, in fact, you can see on the bottom left picture, it's hard to see in the very bottom left of that, you can see kind of a handrail.
Yes.
That's all spectator seating, upstairs, spectator seating, just to give you some scale of how big that facility is.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I guess overall aquatic site, building related questions?
Actually, I don't think this is aquatic, but in both of the schematics of Patton Park, there, the baseball field is kind of off. And I think this last concept, one B, you guys were, or two, sorry, two B, you were talking about how you had kind of moved further into that area, but I, I didn't see the shift on the schematic, so I was just wondering what is becoming of that area where the dog park is and the field?
So you're referring to Patton Park specifically?
Yes.
Emily, would you like to speak to this?
So in both concepts, we would be using that area for the flood mitigation of the fill for the building footprint, since that's where the stream cross-section is.
Okay.
That would, it would be displaced and, and needed to be used to store flood, flood storage. Since we're filling on this side, we need to lower on this side.
Okay, so that entire portion of the property would be no good to be used for anything?
Yeah, it's pretty flat and soggy the way it is now and so it's actually perfectly suited for using that. But yeah, in two B, we're using that entire era, area for flood storage to try to create a larger offset and maybe even additional flood storage than what's out there. In two A, we've got, we've left some of the lawn space there for, that it could be multipurpose. So it could be used for events or if they wanted to let their dog run out there, they could.
And then west side of the park that is also being used for, excuse me, wetland mitigation?
Yeah, so in either.
Both of those sides would have to balance in some way, is that?
In, in the two B option, since we're using all of the baseball field area for that, we are still retaining some of the lawn area on the other side, because we don't need to offset that as much. In the two A option, if we can't get enough storage south of where that lawn area is, we would need to create some additional storage. So that's where we're showing that on, on where the soccer and fields are right now.
Thank you.
So if I may, just for, we're, our plan is to bring this back to you at your October meeting. Because we know this is a lot of information, a lot of things to think about for the public. And we've shared this, I think, with everybody here, but for the public and Brian and Brent correct anything I get wrong. So talking about FEMA and the FEMA process, FEMA would most likely not provide this kind of money. They would, what we would expect is looking back at the replace and the mitigation piece, whatever that amount was, I don't remember what that was. Brian, was that?
The repair and bring to codes and standards was about eight and the replace and kind and mitigate was about seventeen.
Okay, that's what I, okay, I was thinking that. So that being said, so we would obviously shoot for the seventeen with the idea that, you know, the minimum we're going to do is raise it and have a better facility than, than what is currently there. So that's seventeen. So it's not any of those, not close to any of those numbers. It would have to be additional funding from the city council to, to get to these numbers, at least the two versions we have on the screen there. So in order to know that, we've been informed that it would probably be at least another six months to nine months to get FEMA to confirm, am I right? Is that, am I looking, I'm looking at six to nine probably to get?
That's a guess, right?
A guess, to, to have those numbers. So I'm saving that for the public as it relates to, that would be just to have a, we hope would be a definite yes or no. And then we would go into design and construction. So that means we would be a number of years without an outdoor pool in the community. We're not going to make any decisions today, but I just want to be clear, clear about the timeline that we're working on and why there may be some frustration in the community that we have to go through this process if we want to take advantage of the, the FEMA dollars that may come along with it. So, and Brian may talk about that more as it relates to the Halleen. But I, I thought I'd, in case people are leaving, I wanted to be clear to everybody in the room that, again, there's a lot of nuances, you know, it could be a lengthy process, so. And y'all correcting?
There are some things that we would do, like pre-designing things that we would do, but we have to be careful.
So what Brent was saying is.
It'll be a risk-based decision.
Yeah, it'd be a risk. We could do some pre-design, risk-based decision, as, as Brian just said, that we could maybe do some things, but we are at some risk if we don't go forward in one direction or another.
So the way that the process generally works though is that we would apply for FEMA reimbursement for either the repair amount or the replacement amount, hope that we get that amount and then figure out how to finance the rest of it.
If, if you chose one of the larger options or some variation, if you just said, we're just going to do the repair and replace and maybe put a dome in it, just your one body of water, then that would, we'd turn them loose to do that design. Or if you're going to do one of the large projects like that, then we would have to determine how to finance that and how to pay for that.
But if we did say we were going to just raise up what we had, repair what we have, we would get no FEMA reimbursement for that?
No, we, if, if you said repair, raise and repair, the, I think the bare minimum would, you'd get the eight, we would hope you'd get the eight million. We'd, we're going to be asking for the seventeen that they pay for it all and that, is that?
But then the issue would come in the event of a future flood, that we wouldn't get reimbursed the next time?
Well, if we raised it, we would get it out of the flood plain and that would be, you, you would be able to get it insured.
So that situation only happens if we go with the repair option?
Yeah, the minimum repair and it's, it's telling, yeah.
But a raise and repair a fifty meter outdoor pool with a dome or with a retractable roof would essentially set us up to proceed with this plan here and continue moving forward.
But we have to have FEMA to say yes.
Yeah.
Right.
FEMA needs to oblige the project. That would be some variation, yeah.
Otherwise, if we move forward with that, we, you know, we can move forward with that, we're just moving forward with our own risk.
You mean like phase it, is that what you're saying?
Just clarifying, there's no.
Bill, he's big to the mic, please.
Just clarifying, there's, there's no raise and repair.
Raise and re.
It is re- raise and replace and, and, and I know it's a nuance, but just maybe making sure that we're all saying the, the right thing. That it's, the raise, anytime you're raising that facility, it's a replacement option.
Right.
And so you're back into the seventeen, you know.
That's, that's exactly, and it is a fifty-year-old pool, so I will say that for our own sake, it's a fifty-year-old pool. And one of the reasons, I think, and Bill, you may want to step in, even the repair piece, even though we're not raising it, we're making significant significant renovation of the existing facility there, because I would, I would think we had to bring some of it up to code and.
Some of it up to code and then, and, you know, typically what we're looking at is, you know, when you're, when you start to repair an older facility like this is, you know, are you getting to repair costs that are, you know, within fifty percent of the actual replacement costs? And if you are, it might not be the best use of the city's dollars to do that, you know, even, even just in a repair condition.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding MPT correctly. You're saying just build the fifty meter pool so that in the future we could add these other things to it?
Yes. Yes. We build a fifty meter pool with a retractable opening, then we are. Hmm, we are continuing to have an outdoor public pool, we are upgrading to a competition pool where we can host events. And then we can also continue working towards developing that park with outdoor splash pad. And then continuing to do all the other things that we were gonna do, but we're not like really losing anything, and we're gaining a multi-use year-round. Facility.
What's the benefit of phasing it?
Well, it's not really phasing, it's just trying to move forward with a timeline that is feasible for FEMA.
Just like picking a thing that we can afford and doing that, or that we can, we will get reimbursed for, hopefully.
So here's what I would suggest, um, ask your questions of the experts in the room while they're here. I think we can bounce options and phases and those things. Around over the next thirty days or so. Um, because some of these, we're not gonna be able to do on the fly, uh, do on the fly, and so if you have options. We may want to go back to the design team and say, hey, this is what their suggestion, can we take your estimates and plug and play? I'm not putting you on the spot, but I am putting you on the spot, can we plug, can we plug and play? Um, with some ideas that you have that may give you. Ri- harder numbers and we're not gonna come back and support, cause what we try to do is be very conservative, be very high, and put everything in there. Cause we don't wanna have the, you know, come back later and say, hey, it's cost more than we think it is, and we still gotta bid it, I mean, we don't know that, but. We'd like to be as solid as we can, so um, I would suggest that we talk and you give us some ideas, and if you wanna plug and play. We've got thirty days to do that and we can share it with everybody.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there someone, um, is it appropriate to ask somebody in the audience a question?
You're in charge.
It's your rating.
Steve, can I put you on the spot for a second?
Please come to the microphone.
I just really need um, the fifty meter discussion to be clear and concise of why it is beneficial. And is it advantageous for us to have it, or is it not? And what does it allow us to have and what it does not allow us to have?
It probably doesn't help the city, but a a fifty meter competition pool kind of, it's, it would be the only one in western North Carolina. And we would probably bring in a lot more economic impact dollars if we had a fifty meter competition pool. A twenty-five yard competition pool puts us in competition with Jackson County, uh, Witaga, uh, Buncombe County Aquatic Center. Um, to host meets, and every time you host a meet, you're bringing in two to three hundred kids and their families. And the hotels for two to three days, and those are great dollars to get for the hotels, the restaurants and the and the retail. Um, a fifty meter pool is what they swim in the Olympics. Um, and um, Bill was telling you exactly, you can do every competition you wanna do in a twenty-five yard pool. But you have to have a warm-down pool, uh, for large meets, because the the kids have to warm up and warm down in between events. Uh, a fifty meter pool means it's split and then they can, you know, warm down on one side and 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 compete in the other. It also allows programming for the uh, the rest of the week, where we can have, you know, East High School swimming. Uh, and we can have, which doesn't even have a team right now, and it can be having water aerobics on the other side at the same time. With those bridges or bulkheads um, in in the middle, it can be a multi-use pool, you know, Monday through Friday. And on the weekends is when they would typically do this.
And the bulkheads are like what Charlotte has.
Yeah, almost every, uh, I can't think of a fifty meter pool other than Patton that doesn't have a bulkhead. Uh, every current fifty meter pool is made out of metal, not concrete, uh, they've got bridges uh, in the middle, sometimes it's one, it's typically two. Uh, and and you can essentially have two twenty-five yard pools with bridges in the middle. The bridges are great too, because um, if there was a, you know, like a, a kid in trouble in the middle of the pool. The bridge allows the, you know, someone access closer to that kid to jump in and save him or whatever. That was too much.
Thank you.
All right.
Does anybody else have any more questions? Do we wanna move on to the next topic then, and then proceed to have more discussions about this in the next thirty days?
Yeah, I I think we're, you know, we're small steps, small steps, you've got some numbers um, now, and you've got some concepts that have been taught, kinda taught through. And a couple of different options, so I I thank the design team for being here and, you know, an hour and fifteen minutes is is. At least what we need to dedicate to this subject, so I think it's appropriate that we did it this way, and um, then y'all can digest it and come back. And if you have a list of questions, um, staff's frankly not gonna let you sit on it, we're gonna follow up fairly quickly because thirty days will go like that. And we wanna make sure, um, we do have some time because we're waiting on FEMA, but we also wanna get the information you need for a good, good conversation next month.
I feel like these numbers are scary, but then I also look at the fact that um, I still feel like two A and B could be. Modified and altered, the concepts of both of them, what do you think?
I mean, I would agree with that, and I think, sure, the numbers are scary, but I also, like with projects like this, I'm always gonna be go big or go home. Because otherwise, things are gonna get more expensive, and twenty years from now, we don't wanna be like, well, we wish we would have done it a little bigger, let's build another one, like. I don't wanna be in that situation ever again.
I just think we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to to make a really big impact and.
Yeah.
You should not let the opportunity.
Yeah.
I agree, but I would be remiss if I didn't say there is a, an upper budget limit that we had to be very mindful of.
I know.
Unless Steve, I think Steve's up to raising fifteen million, so um, that's a great challenge, Steve, and yeah, so um. You know, he's so positive about this, he he can do it, I think by, within thirty days, he'll have fifteen raised, so.
Yeah, I have great hope that we can commit and then as we're planning. This is a big thing for this community, and I really think we can get partners on board to help, I really, I really do.
I would love to have partners before we commit, I think is where I'm at with this, it's a lot of community money that we're stewarding here.
Yes, so just, I had to say that, so my budget team is not awake all night wondering how we're gonna pay for this, so.
Yeah, we might have just swapped.
Okay, forty days is good, all right, thank you.
I mean, community fundraising would help move things along, wink, wink, nudge, nudge.
I don't like, I don't like the idea of possibility, I agree, we need to have funding in place first. That's just me.
Yeah, I'm still gonna live with my head in the clouds just a little bit longer.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you, good work, thank you.
Okay. We got another one, okay, uh, we are gonna move on to geo bond for transportation, who's gonna be doing that?
Brian.
Okay.
You all don't have to stay to hear about streets, you're more than welcome to.
Ribbiting information.
Thank you, Rachel.
If you say so.
Nice to meet you, Katie. Yeah, you got it.
All right, uh, before we get started, I just wanna say thank you to Chief Ward and the Fire Department, I got the. Pleasure on the way to what I thought would be a lunch, uh, to respond to a structured fire call with them, they did great, uh, they were first on scene out there and. Uh, it was just great to see the professionalism our staff have, and I wanna thank, you know, the professional mutual aid we got from Valley Hill, they showed up fully dressed, ready to fight fire, and we're. Spraying water on the fire within minutes of being there, so appreciate everybody's efforts out there today, and uh, we often forget about it, so, thanks, Chief. Uh, so into geo bond for transportation, uh, your workshop update as we're about to bring. Some critical decisions to you all over the next few months, so uh, today's agenda, we'll just uh, rehash the project, talk about the project timeline, go over the budget for the project. Uh, the implementation strategy that staff is suggesting, uh, and then talk about next steps, so. Desired outcomes are really, we just wanna give you an update, give you the knowledge you need to make the decisions at the upcoming meetings. And finalize any guidance you all might have about the project, um, before we bring this to you all. Uh, just a little uh, background, the last geo bond we did uh, was in two thousand and three, the November ballot of two thousand and three. And they issued, uh, approved the bonds February third, two thousand and four for sidewalks and transportation. We were a double A minus back then by S and P, and we didn't actually start spending these bonds until two thousand and eight. Um, so uh, we're gonna try to make a more timely spend of this approach to the bond referendum. So a quick timeline of where we're coming from, uh, in March twenty twenty-three, we had the update to our current three-year strategic plan, I'm gonna. Pitch that we have a update coming for the next three-year strategic plan, very important when we put these things in the plan, staff and leadership are committed to making these things happen. Uh, so at the council retreat, we identified a tran- transportation bond as the priority uh, in the terms of fix the damn streets. And we took that very seriously, uh, and we have been working to try to pave as much as we can to increase our PCI score. In September of twenty twenty-four, this exact workshop a year ago, our pavement consultants, uh, were actually presenting to you, but everyone else was thinking about something else at the time, so. Many probably don't remember that meeting and what they said, but we presented our PCI update, the last one was twenty eighteen. Coming into twenty twenty-four, we improved to a seventy-four, that's in the fair and above range, uh, we were a seventy-one, so we increased by about three points. Uh, February, at our retreat of twenty twenty-five, we presented some funding strategies for street resurfacing. Got the head nod that yes, this is something we need to continue pursuing, so April of twenty-five, we presented a workshop update to council with a really detailed update of. How we could issue a transportation bond and reminding everyone that we have a federal requirement to do ADA updates as we do. Street resurfacing in certain conditions called ProWAG, this is an unfunded mandate, so city council has to spend these dollars, but you've not provided, been provided any revenue to do it. Um, and we also talked about complete streets at strategies and the safety of our transportation network. Uh, June twenty twenty-five, you approved a budget with a plan for a ten million dollar bond issuance in March of twenty twenty-six, and that brings us to today. Where we're just gonna give you the uh, quick update before your actual council actions start. So a reminder of the overview of the three areas that we're looking at here, the top left is a snippet from our pavement condition study. You can see if we do nothing over the next five years for pavement condition, our average score is gonna drop to a fifty-six. If we spend one point four million a year, we can maintain the seventy-four, and to get that, to that goal of good and satisfactory streets of an eighty. We would need to spend about one point eight million a year, uh, you also received an ADA transition plan update in twenty twenty-four that identified. All of the various ADA impediments in the city of Hendersonville, uh, and the major one of those that we're highlighting today is the curb ramps, there was about sixteen hundred curb ramps. And about ninety-eight percent of those were non-compliant with ADA requirements, and then lastly, the third tier we're thinking about when we're thinking about this is safe streets, this is a snippet of the narrowing of King Street that we had proposed in the past. This is something that's actually been on the strategic plan for a long time, uh, the mayor raised this probably back pre-COVID timeline. Uh, staff created six core values to help guide our decision-making, and we would bring this to city council for your all's decision-making. If this makes sense of how we should prioritize the funds, and if it does, this is how we would move forward in presenting the information to the public and how we would spend the funds, so the first for us was prioritizing pavement condition. For long-term value, we think the goal is to fix the streets, and so we wanna make sure the majority of the money is going into road resurfacing. Uh, we wanna make sure it's a strategic and transparent use of funds, we wanna make sure the public knows where the money goes, and it's affecting everybody. Uh, timely delivery with measurable impact, so if you think about that previous bond project, we wanna make sure we spend this money within five years of the issuance. And we wanna be able to measure that we've, you know, ticked off this number of curb ramps, we've improved our PCA, PCI score, we wanna deliver. Value to the public and to the project, fourth would be equal access and ADA compliance, ensuring that folks in our community are able to use our infrastructure of, infrastructure effectively. Balanced investment across the network, so you'll see a map later showing the roads we think we would be able to repave, and so we wanna make sure it's not just one area of the city that gets this money, but. The city as a whole, and then lastly, advancing our complete streets and our walk hindo bicycle plan uh, goals along the way, so this is what staff came up with as a, as a committee. And this is what's guided kind of our strategy in developing the spending plan for this money. So the timeline, legal timeline on the right, what you'll probably care about on the left, uh, council actions, uh, will start October second with a notice of intent to apply. Uh, November sixth, it'll be three meetings in a row, you would introduce the bond order, at this bond order, you're gonna detail what we're going for. And very importantly, how many pennies we think it would take to pay for it on the tax rate. And set the public hearing, and at that point, we would say we're setting the public hearing for December fourth, the next meeting, and we'll hold a public hearing on this bond order at your December fourth meeting. March third, at the primary election, this would be on the ballot, the voters would go to the ballot and vote yes or no on this referendum. And then on April second, city council will certify the results, essentially giving staff the direction to move forward and withdraw funds off that bond order to start spending on our roads and sidewalks. From a budget perspective, uh, this would provide ten million dollars in debt proceeds, you can see in the top left. And annual revenues that we have already going towards streets is about nine hundred thousand a year, so about four point five million, and we're looking at this in a five-year snapshot. Legally, we have to spend it within seven, we're aiming to do this within five, again, to be timely with the spending of these funds, so about two point nine million dollars a year would be spent on your. Roads and infrastructure, from a debt service perspective on the right, that equates to about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in debt service in the initial year. Coming down to about five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in the final year, uh, this is a level principal financing, so it's not level debt service, you pay the same principal every year on this financing, so. You're gonna gradually bring that debt service cost down over the years, that nine hundred and fifty thousand out of the gates, about two point eight pennies. The five hundred thousand is less than two pennies, and so you're not gonna say a specific debt service number that you have to pay for, but. You're gonna say, what do you think it costs for us over the life of the loan to pay for this loan? And from our model impact, we've built this into our financial model, we don't think this will take a tax rate increase based on natural growth. However, you likely will want to say some number of pennies on the bond order to give yourself some coverage just in case that natural growth doesn't come to fruition.
I think that's exactly, I think we need to be be very careful and be very conservative with with that, just to not knowing what the future holds, so.
So at this point, we're suggesting two pennies would, is what we would list on the bond order.
Um, thanks, so if we have the two point nine each year, that's significantly more than what. They said we needed to increase our score to eighty, cause that was what, one point eight eight?
That's correct.
So we could assume that we would put ourselves in an even better position?
I'll get more to that, remember, we have an unfunded mandate.
Yes.
To do sidewalk and curb ramp and intersection repairs as we do this.
Yes.
And that is why we need.
And those numbers are not included in the 1.88?
Correct.
Gotcha.
So that would be on top of. So that leads really well into the next thoughts. How do we allocate the funds? So appreciate staff's effort in this, the engineering team, the planning team, budget team, everybody who's been involved. Prioritizing how we spend these funds, we've weighted our PCI scores, our ADA impediments, our transportation disadvantaged census tracts, our high injury networks, our proximity to schools, parks, libraries, employment centers. And we created a top scoring list of projects. And we said, okay, if we did these projects and we went all in, repaired every impediment, replaced all the sidewalks, replaced all the streets, and made it all, increased all the safety and networking goals as well, what would that do? And so we did that, and we generated the cost of about $2.1 million for those projects. Building contingency is where we got up to the 2.9 number. And this approach resulted in about six projects resulting only 1.2 miles of paving in year one. That is not nearly enough to advance those PCI scores. We would actually be dropping PCI under this model. So we said, hey, we can't do everything with every project. And so based on the values we developed along the way, we said, let's make sure we're prioritizing resurfacing first and then build in and see if we can create a different model. And so to Assistant Manager Detliler's, great suggestion. Let's utilize the first 900,000 that we have every year for paving, because that's what we're using it for now. So go ahead and allocate that to resurfacing. That's what you see on the left, Tier One resurfacing. And then break out the remaining funds by the prioritization breakout. And so what that resulted in was about 57% of the funds going to resurfacing buckets, 17% going to ADA curb ramps, and 26% going to complete street safety network improvements. And so what this does allocates about $8.3 million of the total funds, the 14 and a half, to resurfacing, two and a half to curb ramps, and 3.75 million to complete street safety network enhancements. What does that mean from a measurable impact perspective? That would put your Tier One, your resurfacing, improving the PCI to approximately a 79 in five years. Repaves about two and a half million square footage of pavement, and it addresses all of our segments of streets that are rated fair and below. And so I'll have a blow up of this map on the bottom right in a second. But all the roads on that map, essentially, we could go after and try to repave. We would have money to do 423 total curb ramps, or about 85 curb ramps a year. And so that equates to about 25% of the deficient curb ramps that we need to address. And then we'd have $750,000 a year to do things like the narrowing in safety of King Street, making it more pedestrian friendly, doing bollards, doing bike lanes, new sidewalks, traffic calming measures. That's where we would start taking that prioritization rank we had previously and applying it to our walk hindo and bike plans. This is the map of all the roads. You can see it's pretty significant. It meets our goal of spreading it out across the entire city. You've got, it doesn't want to work with me here. You've got Carolina Village up here, some commercial center. Yes, it doesn't have fun. That's fine. You've got the Druid Hills neighborhood, West Side, Chadwick Avenue area, Main Street, Seventh Avenue, Hyman Heights. It pretty much hits all aspects of the city that have any sort of deficient roadway. And we would start with the lowest ranked first and work our way up.
So all taxpayers would pay into a GO Bond?
That's correct.
If you paid taxes?
That's correct.
Okay.
And so based on that information, our next steps would be to notice, adopt the notice resolution for a notice of intent to apply for the bond referendum. Finalize our direction on the bond language, AKA the number of pennies we want to put on there. And our staff actions would be, we would start implementing our communications plan. I do have one PSA in here is we cannot spend taxpayer money to explicitly endorse a yes or no vote on any referendum. So we can't say, hey, go vote for that, or don't vote for that. But permissible actions would be things like hosting public meetings to explain the bond proposal, producing informational packets and videos outlining the proposed projects and estimated costs, creating a website with frequently asked questions and project details. So just a PSA for council and staff. We cannot say, go vote yes on this.
Can we as individual council members?
No.
Say something? Okay. That says good money.
Doesn't stop, doesn't stop the bike club from saying this is great or anyone else, but we as, anyone who receives a public dollar from the city.
Okay.
Should not be saying anything about a yes or a no on this.
Got it.
Is a slurry sealer included in the bond amount?
It is not, but we did talk about having some information about different pavement treatments is our next step on. Some of these roads aren't just going to be a standard two-inch mill and overlay. Some of these might have.
Benefit from a slurry sealer?
Benefit from crack seal. We don't know exactly yet. And some of these might need full depth.
I watch a lot of YouTube videos on slurry sealing.
Pavement preservation techniques. That's our next step from a staff perspective as well.
You can tell I'm not giving up on the slurry sealing.
I can, I can.
We can paint your name on the side.
John's touching his head.
It's a goal of mine, make sure John rubs his head at least once every meeting.
We have a bet going every meeting.
Okay, good.
Under overs.
You achieved it.
Under overs, yeah.
Any additional questions or comments on the general obligation bond proposal? All right. I'm just going to stay here.
Thanks for all your work on that.
Rolling in.
Staff.
Appreciate it.
Would you like to proceed to the Hurricane Helene update?
I am prepared.
I didn't realize I had to invite you.
Thank you.
You were already there.
Ladies and City Council, this is, you know, coming up on the year, room, conducting a normal workshop pretty much when the, the PSA came out that this is going to be the storm of a century. I remember everyone kind of trying to figure out what to do in the moments after this council meeting. For example, Community Development Director Lou Holloway had no idea that he actually had a new code enforcement official approved at that meeting. So there's a lot that happened at that meeting that kind of seems like a blur coming into today. And just want to appreciate the staff out of the gate. They've done an amazing job throughout this process, not just the emergency response. We know that was amazing, but the continued FEMA process, the staff's work in diligence and trying to make sure the city comes out as best as possible. And we've made as much lemonade with these lemons as we can is truly remarkable, and I just appreciate everyone for that work. It's not always easy. So this evening, I'm just going to give, one, an update on the FEMA public assistance process, because that's a very large piece of this, and then also highlight what's been going on since the emergency. If you recall at your council retreat, you talked about eight different priorities that were important to you all as City Council members that we're addressing as staff and helping the public in the recovery process. So FEMA public assistance. Quickly, high-level overview of the current city budget obligations and revenues to date. And we've had a lot of changes in the past few weeks, positive changes. So more money could have come in, you know, while we're in this meeting right now. So things are moving. The current revised budget is about $8.8 million that City Council has approved. Our current actuals and obligations to date is 8.23, or about 8.3 million dollars. Our projected total budget is in the $160 million range. That is specifically related to the wastewater treatment plant, which you'll hear a little bit about tonight. Close to, you know, $100 million project, and that makes up a large portion of that projected budget. We had about $288,000 of non-reimbursable actuals that were related to the storm. So that's, I would say, pretty good. We'd like that to be zero. But for what we dealt with, that's not terrible exposure for the city's general fund to cover. Our current revenues, we currently have, I think you saw, there's probably a news release last week. We got $924,000 from FEMA obligated for our force count labor and equipment. And so that's kind of our initial response. This is the first money we've seen from FEMA. And then Monday, we got another notice that 571,000 was approved for one of our debris removal submissions. So we are starting to see the reimbursements for our categories A and B, and I'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. We currently have one and a half million dollars of insurance proceeds that were advanced to us early on in the storm. And then we have approximately $10.6 million in loans that we essentially would repay once we receive FEMA reimbursement in-house. So the loans, appreciate the water and sewer department chasing those and our budget department chasing the treasurer's loan and our finance department working through that. Without those loans, we would be in more difficult positions. So appreciate the state for the assistance there. So that gives us current net surplus about $5.5 million, about $5.1 million from a net position standpoint. On the bottom, I just want a reminder, this is a very abbreviated version of how the FEMA process works. We are stuck in the no man's land of developing the project, which seems to change day to day from you're moving to, you're not moving, you're moving to not move in. So we've had two projects essentially get to this final grant terms at the end here. But we have documented all of our damages and conducted 95% of our site inspections to date. Project overview, so between the categories A through G, we have approximately 87 projects. FEMA has grouped those into 22 unique FEMA project numbers. Don't ask us how that gets decided. We work on that daily. And about greater than 75% of the cost is in our utilities and water and sewer. We have two large park projects that you've heard about earlier tonight, and we have about $2.75 million that was in our emergency response for categories A and B. This is a map of the general damages of the initial projects that we submitted to FEMA. You've seen this before at your retreat. This is available in a dashboard. We're making tweaks to that dashboard now to get it up to date, and we'll make that available again after this presentation. And we also added the detailed steps to that dashboard of what the FEMA process really looks like. It is a long process with a lot of different steps. You can see we've highlighted here the 924,000 that we have actually been obligated for. You can see the green highlight of where that is on the screen. We've gotten the funds essentially, and you can see there's still quite a bit of work to do with FEMA after you've been obligated. A lot of our projects, work for me, here we go, are in this realm. Developing the damage description, getting into compliance review, and agreeing on the scope of work with FEMA. So what happens there is we submit the projects. We say, hey, this is our Whitmire project. We have this repair cost from a consultant, an architect, an engineer, and we give them all that information, and they might come back and say, hey, we actually need some information on this. And so it's a big back and forth, and we try to push these projects into the obligated arena.
So you go to college to develop skills in managing local governments and, right?
Yes.
But is this part of a learning process that staff has been a part of? Like, I mean, it seems uncharted.
They don't teach you this specifically in school. You, you learn about emergency response, right? And we have emergency response plans as a city. No one expects to go through one of the worst, if not the worst, natural disaster in the nation's history and then nonetheless also try to navigate a currently changing FEMA system to make the best for the city after the event. So yeah, it's certainly a challenging process.
Okay, I was just wondering.
I didn't have a class that was like FEMA Navigation 201. Yeah. No, I think that'd be great. They, they do have ICS classes that our staff take, which I'll highlight later.
And, and the process does change on a regular basis. So, yeah. So if you took the class 10 years ago, it's likely obsolete at this point.
Changes teams call to teams call.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, I don't want to get too facetious.
I was being generous.
So emergency protective measures, this category is A and B. This is debris, and this is our emergency response. So this is our, our staff, this is our people out working in the community, getting paid overtime, utilizing our equipment, and addressing the public health and safety emergency that was Hurricane Helene. Category A, our debris category, the 100% match category, we have been obligated the $571,000. That essentially is all the debris that our staff collected, the cost of labor and the cost of equipment that went in to doing that. This is not the same as what you hear for the county's contract. The county is paying a contractor separately to do debris collection. So this is the city staff going out and cleaning up the city. This is what we were obligated from FEMA for doing that, and that was our cost exposure there. The 90% is the post-March 31st cleanup that we've done. So we had the, the sweep in April and May, and so we have about $56,000 that we got. A notice, I think, yesterday, I think Brent signed yesterday that we're pending awards. So this will hopefully be obligated shortly. The category B, force count labor and equipment, this is all our overtime, this is all our equipment usage, about $924,000. We have been obligated those funds, and these are not estimates, these are actuals. We are getting the money in. There's a lot of folks that are just still stuck in the FEMA's giving the money for estimated cost path. So this is really good to be getting to this point with categories A and B. Temp repairs, and I might, contracts and temp repairs get a little messy sometimes. I might have these flipped. But the 171,000 and the 1.2 million in contracts are all in FEMA's hands right now. We've submitted everything that we believe we need to, and we're waiting to hear back from them before it advances to the pending award step. And then the 26,000 in temp repairs is the post-March 31st date. So a 90% cost share where we're responsible for the 10%, which we hope the state will end up picking up. And that's pending EHP review at this point, Environmental Historic Preservation Review. All of this is with FEMA, not waiting on anything from the city for these. Moving on to category C, so this is roads, sidewalks, and bridges. There are approximately 29 projects, approximately $6 million from the original cost estimates. We're refining these. We've submitted, we've completed all the site inspections related to sidewalks, roads, and bridges. And we're trying to make this move a little quicker by breaking it into quadrants, getting meeting some of the small threshold requirements, and hopefully we can get funds obligated a little quicker so we can fix, for example, the sidewalk we all see all the time down on Third Avenue and Valley, I believe. And we have, you know, detailed cost estimates that our engineering team have done. This should be a, a good satisfactory process for FEMA. We have submitted this. We did these site inspection tabletops maybe back in April, several months back, and we've been waiting on FEMA. We've recently received requests from FEMA for maintenance records for city buildings and also waiting on insurance determination, although the roads and sidewalks don't have any insurance coverage. So again, just the process itself, what has been described as they're doing audit as you go rather than come back and audit how the funds were spent. So we're getting kind of hung up along the way where we have projects that are ready to roll, but we're waiting on maintenance records for city facilities and then also insurance determination that have no real impact on, on some of these sidewalks and roads.
So previous hurricanes, like out east, was it Florence, I think, was the?
Matt D. Fox.
Do they still have, like, outstanding money, from what I understand, from FEMA for repairs? Do we feel like this will be different for us, or?
It varies from project to project. I have confidence in this category C area that we've provided a whole lot of information. And once we get these quadrants set up and insurance determination in and the maintenance records signed off that FEMA is happy with our maintenance records, these should move faster. So these, I think, will move faster. You know, things like the pool in Whitmire, those larger projects are the ones that are likely to have. You know, things like the pool in Whitmire, those larger projects are the ones that are likely to have the drawn-out processes. Category E is public buildings, so City Hall, this includes City Hall, City Ops, and Sugarloaf, about two point one million dollars. Again, this was an early estimate. City Hall, we are close to bidding, and we should be able to submit that project for portions of it, for FEMA reimbursement, for some tuck-in point roof repairs, drywall repairs, things that occurred to City Hall from the wind-driven rain. And then Ops Construction, we knew we had enough money from insurance proceeds to get this building back up and running, and we knew how important this room was, so we released this work, and we're pretty much complete to date. I think we're in punch lists, so thanks, Richard, thanks, Brent, thanks, everybody, for the great work on Ops, and happy to be back in this building. And then we'll still pursue mitigation funds, so, you know, we have an HVAC mini-split on the outside of the building we'll want to raise up. Those, the yard at the back, we'll want to repair some fence, so there's still some outstanding things here. But we did have insurance proceeds that were able to allow us to move this building forward. Public Utilities, category F, this is various system damage, and then the major intakes, the two reservoirs and the plants. And so twenty-three projects total, about a hundred and twenty-three million dollars. Some of this is in our category B, some of this is in category F. The major item to highlight here is the wastewater treatment plant, currently under an expedited design with our consultants, and we have been meeting with FEMA's NAV team, I wish I knew what NAV meant, NAV team, to answer questions related to improving this facility and making it more resilient for the future. It's about a hundred million dollar project, and it involves moving the headworks of this facility into the old wastewater treatment plant area, which is down here on the map. Moving it from here, out of the floodplain, into here, and adding equalization basins and other improvements. We're reviewing this with FEMA, this is one of those projects that's going to take a really long time. Anything I missed? I'm gonna hit on that wide net, yeah. And then also to note, you know, the French Broad River intake is close. We're really close to getting that up and running, that was damaged. We were really close to opening it before the storm, and then that delayed the start of that intake, so that resiliency effort is almost done, and then we're really working through our two reservoirs. That has been a process, those reservoirs, we both, were both dredged in the recent years and improved. If you remember some of those presentations on those, and they're pretty much full of rocks and sediment. So where the, the reservoir used to be, our staff with the FEMA inspector were parking four to six vehicles on top of what used to be water. It's category F. Category G, various park damages. We have other park damages outside of Patton-Whitmire, I'm not going to talk about Patton-Whitmire tonight because we just heard a lot about those. We have Sullivan Park that we're applying for, we have Rotary Park Deck, the Dog Park, there's a variety of projects in here. These are some of our last projects that are awaiting final tabletop inspections from FEMA to get them moving through the process. And again, as you'll note, with all of these, we have waiting on maintenance records and insurance determination that is pausing a lot of this progress on all of these projects. Quickly, you talked about eight recovery priorities. One, our emergency response plan, financial resiliency, public communication messaging and storytelling, and flood mitigation. In addition to investment in redundant and resilient critical infrastructure, the FEMA public assistance process right now is what we're doing with that. Trained and right-side city staff debris management and housing. And so staff have been working on this, I'm gonna pick a few of these out for each of these, but you have this presentation. If you have questions about where we are in all of these priorities, we have to come back with more information on this. But just in essence of time, I'll highlight a few things. So our current emergency response plan, we're streamlining and enhancing our crisis comms plan. Allison's team is working on that. The utility has supplemented its emergency response plan for specific critical assets, assets in the system. And we submitted updated response criteria to the countywide hazard mitigation plan. Mike, thank you for championing the hazard mitigation plan update. He was doing that before the storm, and everyone got a little more interested after the storm. Financial resiliency, the utility actually did receive a public rating, if you remember this summer. So we received a AA-three rating, which is the fourth highest rating by Moody's possible. So they really noted strong financial management and recovery and our performance during the storm as part of their rating process. So that's something to really be proud of, it really just sets up how strong our utility is. They also secured about nine point six million dollars in loans to help us keep these projects moving forward. So great work by the Water and Sewer Utility here. Some future things we're gonna want to talk about in the next budget is amending the fund balance policy to include some allocation for emergency operations, and creating an emergency management capital reserve fund that can supplement projects to add resiliency to different capital projects as we move forward. Public communication and storytelling, we also have the Helene story map, we've had some great water system stories. Our staff have participated in the Henderson County Joint Information Team and regional PIO teams. We implemented an after-hours water sewer utility call center, and we'll be releasing some Helene documentaries this week. Flood mitigation, I'm glad Mike's here, if you all have any questions, he is in the room, thank you for sticking it out, Mike. We did hold a community-wide flood workshop in January, and we do plan to continue to do that on an annual basis. We have started our Lower Mud Creek project, the groundbreaking next week, is that right? They're out there, they're working, okay. Groundbreaking's occurred, this might be an old update. And then really, one of the big things is the buyout program and coordinating with Henderson County and North Carolina Emergency Management on final ownership of buyout properties at Dana Clear Creek Landing in Leland Circle. Talked about casting a wide net, I do just want to highlight all the grants that the city has applied for. So the current work is our current application, so you have FEMA public assistance, but the city is pursuing every avenue we can. We've applied to the Economic Development Administration grant for the wastewater treatment plant expansion. Dogwood Funds through an NPO partnership for the wastewater treatment plant expansion. Hazard mitigation through the state for wastewater treatment plant expansion. Hazard mitigation advanced assistance, so this is design and permitting, it's not construction, but does get you the money sooner to keep these projects moving. We've got the wastewater treatment plant. Water system resiliency looping, so making improvements in the north side and east side of our system. One, to help Advent Health Hospital in the north side, and we have some industry and improvements that can be made from a pressure perspective on the east side, near Upward Road as well. Pump station flood mitigation, Mills River intake, Long John Mountain, which has, if you remember, that project has a ton of pump stations and lift stations, so the design for that project, and our Wash Creek Stormwater Master Plan. We've applied to state revolving funds for Helene specifically for wastewater treatment plant flood mitigation and the water system looping, again, the east and the north side. The US EPA for Long John Mountain design. State Small Business Infrastructure Grant for sidewalks on Seventh Avenue and Utility Line in Kane Creek. A state grant that we received fifty thousand dollars for, for a swift water rescue boat gear and wildfire turnout gear for the fire department. The Duke Energy Foundation for a drone as a first responder, and then also the Arbor Day Foundation for thirty thousand dollars of tree replacement due to storm damage. And the big one that was not even on this list is CDBG Disaster Recovery, and that's gonna be for infrastructure and housing. Once that notice of funding is available, which should be soon, we will be submitting as many applications as we can. Training and right-side city staff, I will say, we've been doing a lot since the storm. Staff has been out doing trainings, participating in tabletop exercises with Henderson County, and we actually took a trip to Boone to learn from how Boone staff handled their response to the hurricane to share with other professionals in the region. And then we'll continue with mutual aid for future disasters, so if there's a disaster down east, we'll plan to send folks down there to get more experience in disaster response. Debris management, as you know, the city's done a great job with this debris management. We collected around thirty-three thousand cubic yards with our own force account labor. And in the April sweep, I'm saying eighty-seven loads, because this included construction material and debris, so we're picking up TVs, couches, things like that. So initial response was really vegetative debris, that thirty-three thousand cubic yards. We've purchased new grapple buckets for the skid steers, and we are beginning to do zoning enforcement for blighted commercial properties. And a big thing that we'll need to talk about in the future related to debris is a new debris site. Our debris site filled up during this event, and we also will likely need this site for the wastewater treatment plant expansion. So we are starting, the wheels turning on that proposal. And lastly, housing, our community development team did great work on the housing front, so we worked with homeowners with damaged properties in local historic districts to ease the burden of the COA process. Only one accessory structure was demolished in this process. And we created an in-house GIS repository of the damages and provided homeowners information on how to navigate the process. We allowed non-conforming residential uses to rebuild if damaged by the storm. We approved temporary use of RVs in state of emergencies for up to a hundred and eighty days. We waived permit fees. We received seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from CDBG Neighborhood Revitalization for home rehab grants in the Green Meadows and other neighborhoods around the city. And we're gonna be working to spend those dollars as we move forward. And I'm about to be at questions, and we're one minute left, but John wanted to talk about this slide, so I'm gonna let John. We go over, this is.
I'll be in trouble. So just, you know, wanted this slide just to kind of remind us all, because we are one year, and you see the dash line there, which is really the one-year anniversary, and you see we still have, and this goes to Mayor Pro Tim's comment a minute ago, you know, we still have ways to go. We've come a long way, though, I mean, we have seen the highs and the lows, and have bottomed out there, and now we're on an upward trend, and I know when Brian and the work of Brent, that were particularly getting that first nine hundred thousand dollars obligated, it was just, I think, a tremendous lift. I know, you know.
Still a bit disillusioned, but.
Yeah, I mean, they may be, but hey, it helps.
It's good, it is good.
But just, you know, it's a great slide, just showing, you know, that this is absolutely a marathon, and we get disillusioned, but it's not anything that other folks have not gone through and will not go forward. So I think it's a great slide that we found and we talked about as part of our retreat. And so I don't want us to forget that we are making progress and moving forward, to see where we are there. So I just thought it was important to throw that in there.
Thanks, Sean, and I'll take any questions, I tried to fly through that, so.
Brian, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of rehab from that money, how many applicants have applied for it?
Angie, I'm gonna lean on you for that.
So I can speak generally to that, we've been working with housing assistance to identify. And so I don't know the specific number, but I know that they've been working really hard, and we recently did a little PR push, too, to try and get more people. There were five projects before we got the seven hundred and fifty thousand additional. We're trying to get the total number to be twelve, is what the goal is. And they are scattered, what we call scattered site, not, they're across the city. Anybody in the city could apply.
So we still communicating with the public that these funds are available, and for them to apply to see if they do qualify, we're making an effort to get that out?
Yes, ma'am, that's my understanding.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all, honestly. The response today, I mean, we're out there with great new fire apparatus, trained staff, and the investments you're making in staff for the hurricane response have paid off, and we just appreciate that.
Great team. Just remind, I know there's lots going on this weekend with Ardell, Maine, and other family events and everything, but we are having our employee lunch on Friday. We're gonna meet at the fire station, kind of relive our fourteen days at the fire station, we'll have a nice lunch there to thank our employees and kind of celebrate. And we're looking forward to the videos going out next couple of days. The communications team's done a great job with that, so. Mayor Pro Tim, we are done.
I apologize, I will not be there, we are trying to give my daughter a slightly better birthday than she had last September twenty-seventh, so. But thanks for everything, and you guys are amazing, so we really appreciate it.